Thank you for coming. My name is Susan Branskiel. I'm for Selectmen in the town. And I'm going to call the meetings to order. We have Board of Selectmen, we have Economic Development Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission members here. And I'm going to read the names of the various board members. Most of them are here, many are not here, and we'll expect that hopefully. I do know Kathy Richards had another appointment, she can't be here tonight. Brian Flood should be here, he's the deputy for Selectmen. Carl Chudzik is here. Carl? Fred Nouse. Michael Pelton is expected, he's not here yet. And Benjamin Surk. With the Economic Development Commission, Elwyn Gyle, chairman, is here, along with Rick Shaw. We're expecting Miller Hank, Mark Judge, and Gregory Piatzla is not expected tonight. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have Bruce Tyler, chairman. Carol Aldis is the vice-chairman. Robert Ellsworth. Chantelle Foster. Terry Grady. And alternate Michael Warren. So this is a joint meeting of these three boards and commissions. And what we're going to do to bring everyone somewhat up to date is going to be a short slide presentation I want to show. And then we will have discussion by the members of the boards and commissions, after which there'll be opportunity for public comment. And our reporting secretary is Laura Ciana. And Laura, as I said, when you do make public comment, that you should state your name, spell it, because everybody likes their names spelled right, along with your address. Residents can speak, and property owners. If you happen to be a property owner and you don't live in the town, you can speak. We also have town staff here. Our economic development consultant, Mary Diperson, is here. And Deanna Rose, our town planner, and Carrie Olson, who is town attorney, is a couple of chairs in the house. As well as Dan Bertram, who is the developer, who is participating in the planning department, welcome. And owner Fred Hassan is here as well. And Fred, you're here very often, so I would have to welcome you today. You're here very often. And your attorney is here as well. Right. Start. Bruce told me you'll always start on time, is that right?
Right.
So welcome Planning and Zoning Commission, Economic Development Commission, Board of Selectmen, and of course residents and our guests. Thank you all for coming tonight. Brief timeline as to how we got to where we are tonight. In 2007 or thereabouts, discussion started for the redevelopment of what used to be a psychiatric and promotion of wellness facility. It was owned by Fred and his partners for many, many years, still is. And as time went on, the delivery of psychiatric services changed, and they decided that they would redevelop the site for different uses. So in 2009, after lots and lots of work, a developer named Anthony Flannin brought and was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission a mixed-use development site plan. That is still an approved site plan, but it has not been implemented. That particular plan had eighty-two condominiums or apartments as the plan, along with almost one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail and commercial development. In 2014, we had a grassroots group form with a lot of interest in this redevelopment plan. So the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee formed, all on their own. There are a group of citizens that are very interested in seeing that this development occur in accordance with the town's wishes. They're still very active, some members are here tonight. In 2015, at the urging of the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee, and also at the urging of many people in our community, we decided we'd try to help the project, and we applied for and received a vibrant communities initiative grant. It's a $50,000 grant, and a report was issued in 2015. And there's a copy of it up here, and it is also on our website. We're going to talk a little bit about this tonight. Also in 2015, a new developer was assigned, and that's BRT. Dan Bertram is the principal from BRT. And John DiMarco is the principal of DiMarco. A company out of Rochester, New York, for example, does work in Connecticut, built the Bass Pro Shops in Bridgeport, and has also done development in the Danbury area. And I brought with me the latest apartments that are online that Dan Bertram has developed and is renting in Brookfield. So if you have time during the break, you can look at these. In 2016, some of you may have come to the Plan of Conservation and Development meetings. Many, many people participated in that, and we passed it March 3rd, I think, the Planning and Zoning Commission passed the new Plan of Conservation and Development. And in 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission was approached by Dan to request that the Planning and Zoning Commission make a text change, a language change, within their regulations. And the purpose for tonight's meeting is to open up this process so that the entire town can understand what is going on and can begin to help us in the redevelopment of a very important parcel of our town. So thank you Planning and Zoning for meeting with us tonight along with Economic Development. The current zoning regulations allow between one and three residential units for every five thousand square feet of retail. That is a ratio that is built into the regulations. Planning and Zoning Commission is contemplating a text change to this particular language within their regulations. So that's why we're here tonight, to give them input and to help them in the decision-making that they'll be expected to make in the near future. I want to talk a little bit about the Plan of Conservation and Development. It was approved on March 3rd, 2016, and that's a ten-year plan. You paid about $20,000 for a consultant to help us put it together, it's a little extra. We have two parts. One is the plan itself, it's called the strategic element, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes. The implementation element is very important, because as we all know, plans can be paid for, and they sit on shelves, and they don't get implemented. So at the urging of Bruce Tyler and our town planner, we commissioned and got an actual implementation element that will help to actually implement the plan for development and conservation in our town. One of the things I want to talk about is the beginning, the beginning, the vision statement. It serves as the keystone for the implementation of the Plan of Conservation and Development. It's developed with significant contributions from the Citizen Development Coalition. And I mention this because it's important to point out that there are many, many people involved in all of these plans. It's not just five members or six members of Planning and Zoning, but many, many people attended the various workshops for the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Elmcrest, Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee, the Airline Trail Steering Committee, some members are here tonight, the Complete Streets Group, I know they're here, members of Middlesex Land Trust, Parks and Recreation, Brownstone Quorum, the Historical Society, and the Shamsi Kaiten. They've had a large part to play in making some of these specific vision statements. Incentives will be created. Adaptive reuse, taking old buildings and making them useful for modern times. Adaptive reuse strategies instituted to preserve our character and to make things more energy-efficient. Two, town policies will promote preservation as a community revitalization tool. The History and Architecture of Portland, which was a book written by some of our residents, will serve as the inventory of resources to be preserved, and it's at our public library if you need to look at it. Commercial development of the Elmcrest property will result in village district placemaking, complement existing businesses, which are very important to us, and strengthen our economic development. In addition, we're looking at design improvements for both state and town roads in our town, as well as improvements to promote the economy and have a positive impact on our health and well-being. So something we're also working on, and that is with this vision statement, development of the Airline Trail and a town park on Route 17, which I'm sure you've read about, in partnership with state nonprofit groups to promote recreational opportunities, protect and preserve our rural wildlife assets, safeguard our beautiful lakes, ponds, streams, and of course, the Connecticut River. Now, one of the items that the Planning and Zoning Commission and the input of public citizens said was urgent and important is Village Center redevelopment, Elmcrest redevelopment, riverfront quarries and Brownstone Avenue attention, and we're spending a lot of time in that area right now, which we'll go into at another workshop. Industrial zones as well as our Airline Trail, which I hope you've read about in your papers recently and attended many of our meetings. So, it's urgent and important that we redevelop Elmcrest. It's to promote appropriate redevelopment of this site in ways that will enhance our overall community. Specifically, we want to honor our history and heritage, retain historically important buildings, support and enhance the appropriate development of what's called the Village Center, which is where a lot of people in our community live, shop, go to the doctors, go to the drugstore, eat, and do a lot of activities like this, where we meet one another and become stronger as a community. The plan recommends that redevelopment of the Elmcrest property follow the Vibrant Communities Initiative Report, which was endorsed by the Board of Selectmen. Now, this is a concept plan, and there's three different concepts that they talk about in the plan. We used professional community designers, they're from Massachusetts, the Cecil Group. We used Ty and Bob, Bob, a local engineering company, and Bartman Cochran, which is a local marketing and marketability study business. The objectives were to, again, share a community vision, provide workable and beneficial redevelopment, and advance practical development in a site. We held many, many meetings, and there were many stakeholders, including businesses and many other people. Specifically, Fred Hassan's part of that group, Dan Bertram, Ellen Munfitter, a local architect, Bobby Petzel, owner of Petzel Marine, Grant Sandborn, the owner of Trivalium, Elwyn Gyle, very active in the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee, and our economic development chairman, myself, Deanna Rose, Mary Diperson, Claire Frisbee from the Historical Society, and Debbie Oakley, who was chairman at the time of the Economic Development Commission. So, after they met, they developed a plan, and it was presented in July. And there are three scenarios that are talked about in the report. First one talks about retail at the northwest corner, residential to the south and east, preservation of three of the six designated stored buildings with a green in the center, and 240 residential units to 36,000 square feet of retail. That's a ratio of thirty-three to five thousand, which is very different from the one to three to five thousand that's already approved at this point. But this was recommended by the Cecil Group after listening to the community. Scenario B, similar, retail on the west side, residential on the east side. The east side would be closer going toward East Hampton, and of course, the west side is closer toward Main Street. Again, preservation of the three historic buildings and the green in the center, 180 residential units in this scenario, complemented by 66,000 square feet of retail, and that ratio is approximately fourteen residential units to five thousand square feet. And remember, that's the issue that Planning and Zoning is going to be looking at, where they feel should fall for our town. Scenario C is similar. Mixed-use buildings, residential throughout the site, keeping the three stored buildings in the center, and then 123 residential units to less retail and commercial, 31,000 square feet. And that works out to the 20 residential units for 5,000 square feet. And that's just a reminder of what the current ratio is. One thing I wanted to point out, yes, is that we're all getting, not all, well, everyone's getting older, everyone's getting older. And our community in particular, Connecticut, I'm sure you all watch the news and read the papers, it is an aging state. It's not necessarily a bad thing, but it's something you have to be aware of and plan for. You want to plan for a livable community for the people who live here, pay the taxes, and participate. And I think we also want to attract younger families and people to come and join us in terms of developing our community. A lot of you are young in the audience, and I'm glad to see that we're all here, the old and all you're young. So I think we might anticipate an increased interest in different options for housing, whether it's apartment living, whether it's senior, more senior living, or living that might be associated with assisted living, never know. I just also put up some of our communities in the area. Blastonbury is looking at a 150-unit housing project, the first within their new town center zone. That's been proposed recently. Proposal calls for 84 apartment units within three buildings and some townhouses, benefiting outside the pool and above. In East Hampton, there's quite a lot of new housing occurring there, 200 dwelling units on 73 acres, as well as a development closer to Marlborough of 253 units and 63 acres. So our surrounding communities are growing in terms of their housing options as well. The Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee has a lot of beautiful pictures on the website. So I wanted to show some of them to you. These are the three historically recognized by the National Historic Register as being significant in their architecture and in their history and their contribution to the United States, not just in Portland. This is the Brainerd House, thank you. And that is the inside. Pictures here. Some of the fancy work that is inside these buildings. This is the Sage House, the one that you see, and the leaves are down as you turn onto Marlborough Street, toward Main Street. And then the Hart Jarvis House, which sits facing the river. It doesn't face Route 66, it faces the river, and it has these lovely pillars. Just some of the pictures that show the insides, which many of you may not have been in in quite a few years. There's a new concept plan that BRT and DiMarco Group has put together, and they have been marketed. They have not submitted it to the town. There's no pending application at this point in front of Planning and Zoning, not until the Planning and Zoning Commission determines if they're going to make changes to their regulations. There are copies of this up here for later, if you want to take a closer look. It's a schematic, is that right? And for our Jerram International is the retail ambulance state consultants that are marketing the project, and you can find them on the web. There's alternatives to that, we've talked about it in some of our meetings that we had, whereby perhaps the Hart Jarvis House could be moved, to be shown as it come off the bridge, might be a way to display it better, and a way for us to utilize it better. Simply an alternative. I also put in some of the things that the Cecil Group showed us. These are, I think, pretty pictures, that show the potential for what right now is really a site that is in need of attention. I'm sure as you drive by the Elmcrest site, you see that it is abandoned and lonely, and it needs improvement. And it is a major, major endeavor for us to participate in. Maybe someday you'll look, something like this, something like this. I don't know where that is, from shopping, Blastonbury. I think this one was in...
New Hampshire.
New Hampshire? Yes. Who's that now?
New Hampshire.
Woodstock Inn, I believe that is in Vermont. And there's our beautiful Elmcrest, that we hope will become our shining star for others to put pictures up. So, that's icebreaker to get us started, and now the groups will start to discuss the purpose for which we're here. Turn it over to Bruce.
Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not deal in alternatives.
Can you use the microphone?
I could. The Planning and Zoning Commission does not deal in alternatives. They deal in facts and objective plans. So, the rumor that there are going to be 300 low-income housing units in Portland, not true. Not true. Nothing like that. You saw in the paper an article that kind of disposed of that, but some of you may still believe it. Not true. It's not going, it's not going to happen.
Is it going to be deed restricted, high end? You're making a bold statement, I'm curious.
It's, it's not going to be, it's not our decision to make it deed restricted.
So, so there is the potential then?
No. It is based on the text change, and if the text change is not, does not allow 300 units, then there will not be 300 units.
Okay, so you're referring to 300 units.
Could we let Bruce finish his statement, and then we'll have questions? Would that work?
That's a great idea, Susan.
Would that work?
That would, that would work really well.
Thank you.
So, that's not, I'm trying to shorten the conversation some. I see a lot of you want to talk anyway. But it's not going to be 300 units of low-income housing. Also, the development of housing is going to be tied to the development of commercial property. Our prospective developer wanted to remove that. We did not want that removed. So that will be probably back in. The text change is a text change of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is going, that commission, these guys, are going to make the change, whatever it is. That's a negotiative process. But bottom line, it's going to be something that both the town can agree to and the developer can agree to. If the developer does not agree to that, whatever the bottom line is, he can walk away from it. And we stay. And look for another developer. So it, it's not as if this is like one deal that's going to be set tonight, and that's it. That's not going to take place. We will probably make the text amendment change the first meeting in April. And, and I welcome you, all of you, to come to that meeting and offer your opinions. So, this is preliminary, it is not final. We deal in facts, we don't deal in alternatives. And those of you who wish to speak on this can certainly do so. But just remember that we deal in facts, not alternatives, not prospectuses, nothing like that. We deal with a plan that is submitted to our commission that we can either approve or disapprove, or suggest modifications. And that's it. It's a process. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
So I just wanted clarification, you brought up the article, you thought clarified things, I thought it actually made it more confusing. So you said there will not be low-income housing?
I did not say that.
You said there will not be 300 low-income houses?
That's what I said.
Could you elaborate on your statement? Are you referring to you will pick the number, but it could still be low-income? Just could you finish the statement?
So, the town of Portland has less than 10% of its housing as low-income. And I think, last time I looked, it was 10.8%.
Eight.
Eight percent. That means, that means...
It's like 8.5%.
Okay. Whatever it, whatever it is, it's less than 10%. The, any developer who wants to include low-income housing can do so without the permission of Planning and Zoning Commission by state law. And I have no idea whether this developer wants to do that, or doesn't want to do that, or is neutral, or whatever it is. But there could be some low-income housing there. Yes, that's a possibility. It will not be 300 units. I bet you, he doesn't want to be 300 units either.
Did you want to comment on that?
Well, I'd be happy to talk whenever you'd appropriate, so.
But we'll wait till after the boards...
Sure, that's fine.
Economic Development, is there any comments?
I'm Elwyn Gyle, currently the acting chairman of the Economic Development Commission. And as many of you know, I've been very active with the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee since its inception. So I have some knowledge and recognize all of the principles. Dan, it's good to see you, and Fred. Susan stole my thunder and did it beautifully. Thank you, Susan. That was an incredible overview of why we're here. And I expected this room to be full, and you did not disappoint me. This is transparency. And every step of the road in this endeavor has been transparent. At every turn, rooms like this were filled with people like you. Whether it was with the Conservation and Development Plan, which was approved last week, as Susan mentioned, or whether it was for the workshops that the Cecil Group held in putting together the VCI report, and many of you I saw there. This has been a collaborative effort of the citizens and the agencies of this town. And I suspect that you'd agree with me, that this is a positive turn from past experience. I think it's a new day, and we owe that new day to you. There's going to be comment tonight. We're going to learn from you, and we're going to first learn from each other. This is not an adversarial meeting, this is to be a constructive exchange of information and ideas. And when your turn comes, I'd ask you to do this much for us. Abraham Lincoln could give the Gettysburg Address in about 90 seconds. I suggest that you try to time yourself for three minutes at most. Think about it. Ten people, three minutes is a half an hour, 20 is an hour, 15 is an hour and a half. We don't want to be here till midnight. Think about what you want to say, say it as clearly as you can. You can always come back a second shot, but please don't, be respectful of everyone else, all right? Now let me speak for the Economic Development Commission. We met last night, and certainly knew what was on this agenda, and have studied it and discussed it, and have taken sort of a position on it. We have a view. And I think it's constructive, and I think in concert with what you heard from Bruce Tyler. But in our case, we're not concerned necessarily with this ratio, whether the number's 10, or 15, or 20, or 30. But rather, that whatever the project is, when the site plan is finally on the table, we would expect, and certainly will lobby, and try to influence as advisors and advocates for economic development, that the ultimate approval be framed around the findings of the VCI report. They were projected here on the screen, you saw a lot of information. So let me just repeat a couple of things. In summary, what the VCI report said is, and I'm stretching the language here, the Elmcrest campus is a real jewel for this town's economic development. Whatever happens there should complement the existing businesses in this town. It should inspire new businesses in this town. It should provide the kinds of amenities and services... It should provide the kinds of amenities and services that are not available here that you would appreciate. And most importantly, that it would create a destination for consumers and for residents. A destination, not a location. A place that people would go out of their way to visit because of its amenity, because of its character, because of its environment and because of all of the other associated business opportunities or recreation opportunities. There was a reference several times to Village Center. In the final plan, that, that language has been changed to Town Center. We have a village district, that's most of Main Street from the bridge to, to the post office. The Town Center is the entire residential and commercial area that's Marlborough Street in Maine. Just think of it as that intersection expanded. Town Center. VCI talks about the importance of a Town Center. Susan mentioned what a Town Center would mean to just being able to speak with your neighbors and see your old high school classmates to become a community in a real sense and to share that space. The VCI report in almost every case in their concept plans spoke to the need or a town green. We've got a linear town here. We follow the river like every other river town. We're not Vermont with this lovely little, you know, square in the middle. But we have an opportunity with the Elmcrest development to create a consolidated Town Center that would be pedestrian-friendly. You saw the references to need, need for improvements to traffic management and that'll be part of this ultimately. That is what the Economic Development Commission is going to be advocating for. And. Trying to, as best we can, focus the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission members in their thinking when a final site plan is, is presented to them. One other thing that came to mind, the concept plans, A, B, and C, that came out of that VCI study. What it said to me was the following. You saw ratios, it said you can get 30 apartments for every, you know, unit of commercial or you can get 14 apartments for every, or you can get 20. What we're seeing there was as the amount of commercial space increased, the amount of residential space decreased. There's only so much land there. This is a very dynamic development. Commercial retail space versus residential space. The more commercial, then the less valuable I would assume that the residential would become. And maybe the more limited because you've eaten up most of the campus with, with commercial. This is the, this is the, the work of developers is to find that magic mix so that the residents that would be living there are paying a premium to live there because the environment is such that it warrants it. The business community wants to be there because it is a destination, not a location. Thank you.
Give this side, Brian?
I'll just speak briefly. My name is Brian Flood, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. I recognize my role as a member of the Board of Selectmen here. This is really a decision for the most part for the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, I do have some thoughts about this and I'll be brief. I, I do believe the Board of Selectmen does play a role and there has been some discussions in the past with the prospective developer about subsidies that the town would provide. And I, I think that's premature. I know there's been talk about that and it's my belief that that really is dependent and contingent on exactly what kind of property is being built here. And there was a proposal at one point and that has drastically changed. And I don't even believe that there's a real plan or proposal being suggested as we sit here tonight anyways. But before we get anywhere with subsidies and tax abatements and that sort of thing, I think we need to know what the plan is and whether it is good for the town or not. I think at, at this point, and I've been talking about this, I think the primary focus, it certainly should be what's good for the town, but I think there needs to be a, a focus on this really from a financial standpoint and whether this is beneficial to the town from a financial standpoint. And I believe that that analysis has to be done. I don't believe it has been done. I believe we need to know what sort of revenue is going to be generated from this particular property, what kind of expenses are going to be going out the window depending on what sort of project we're putting in here, whether it's 180 or 300 or 200 homes or apartments. That does have an impact on the, the town from a financial standpoint. And I think that analysis has to be done before you can make any decision as to how you're going to change this plan and what you're going to allow to go on that property. And I don't know that it's been done, but I would think that that should be priority number one in terms of assessing whether this is good for the town or not. Everyone is talking about economic development, everyone has talked about economic development since I've been on the board. And before that, I will confess that I generally, I grew up here in the town of Portland. I generally appreciate the smaller aspect of the town. I do believe in some development as long as it's smart and intelligent and it's going to benefit the town. I don't know that it makes sense that if you're, you're just going to build something for the sake of building something, unless it's actually going to benefit the town. What good is commercial development unless it's actually going to be a positive from a financial standpoint? And I don't think we know those answers. And I don't think you're going to know those answers until the Planning and Zoning Commission studies that, analyzes that, analyzes that, determines what's going to go on that property, what's good for the property, what the ratio is, et cetera, et cetera. So I understand that there's a developer here and they'd like to, to go forward and, and there's a property owner here and he certainly has his rights to develop this. But planning and zoning, it's their role really to determine before they make any of those changes, what is good for the town. And I think that comes from a, it has to begin with a financial analysis as to whether this is going to be beneficial to the town or not. So I think that's where we need to begin. I know that from speaking from Board of Select, ah, excuse me, from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, there have been some suggestions about subsidies. And again, I think that really depends on whether that decision is ever made. Again, goes from a financial standpoint and whether it's going to be beneficial to the town or not. There's an awful lot to talk about, about this project, but that's where I think we need to begin. Thank you.
Good evening. Fred Knauß, Board of Selectmen. Just a, a couple of thoughts here. One, one getting back to Bruce on the text amendment. I gather that the text amendment is not, there's nothing formal before you. Is it something that the developer has presented, not presented, is the town staff working?
He has presented a draft.
A draft?
Yes. We, we will probably change that draft.
Okay, so the dra, the concept was presented, but not the, the actual technical language? That's still being worked on by, by staff?
That's correct.
In regards to the, just some comments about the economic development, I. Sure, is that better?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. In regards to the economic development part of it, I agree with certain, certain things that my fellow Selectmen said and disagree maybe slightly with some others. Just a, a couple of thoughts. One is that the town, we have quite a few problems in terms of issues in town that have to be resolved. And we do have to, we, we do have to resolve them. One of them, and I think in terms of development, is the fact if we can get appropriate development. I don't think anyone here wants inappropriate development. If we can get appropriate development, if we can get a project that, as Susan said before, has the support of the town, not every, not everybody in the town, we're not going to have 100% approval. But if we have approval, generally speaking from the town and the developer has, is happy, then the, the project can move forward. Some of the issues we have, for example, are, and we're trying to deal with water and sewer. We have, we have a water system and a sewer system that continually needs upgrades, infrastructure upgrades. We also have a, a problem with revenue. We have a limited number of customers. And so projects, economic development projects, which then would increase the number of customers would certainly be of great help to the town. And additionally, there's factors of, of economic activity. If we have construction, we have appropriate construction, we will have people with jobs, some of whom would be in town. There would be a certain amount of economic activity that would, would help the town, I think greatly. Again, it's still, as Tom said, it, it's premature because we're not looking at a specific proposal. But conceptually, I would like to see something happen that is appropriate. I think it would be a great thing for the town. Jobs, a greater tax base, an ability to have some infrastructure improvements and, and help our, our utility deficits. So that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else with planning and zoning want to speak? Shantel?
I just want to pick up on something that Brian said. I think we're talking about a text amendment, so we're not really looking at a plan. And I just want to be clear on that. So the text amendment that we're considering would therefore, if we're changing it, we would, it would be changed for, for everybody. So that's just something to keep in mind. So we're not looking at a plan, we don't have anything in front of us. Just wanted to put that out there.
I have, yeah, two comments, Bob Ellsworth, Planning and Zoning. The wording in the regulations speaks to the number of residential units per square foot of commercial space. But what it really doesn't talk, speak to is the square footage of the residential units per square foot of commercial space. So I think perhaps we should consider that. And the other comment is regarding Brian's comment about financial analysis. I'm not sure that's the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Not really quite sure who it is, but I'm not sure it's, it's ours.
I'm confident it is not.
Thank you.
Anyone else with planning and zoning want to speak? Mike?
I'm just going to try to, try to clarify a few things, just in case there's any confusion. If someone hasn't come to a lot of zoning meetings. But normally, Planning and Zoning considers a text amendment to a zone. And that zone affects many properties. So, so you don't kind of think of one piece of property and say, okay, we're going to change this zoning regulation and it's going to affect this property and this property only. So I'm going to, I just want to try to explain, I'm going to do a horrible job at it. I'm going to try to explain a little bit of how we, how we've gotten to this point. And, you know, the short is I, I oppose any increase in the residential units on this property. It's a commercial piece of property. And the way we got to this point where there was any residential allowed was with our plan of development, which was a positive thing for the town to sit down and think about what we actually want in this town. So that first plan was put through in 2006, 2006. So it started, you know, they started working on it in 2005, I wasn't on the board yet. But I regularly attended meetings, probably starting in about 2001, 2002. And, and you had Dave Sundell and Terry Supple, a lot of great members, just like there's great members now. People that give up their time. And, you know, I used to remember Terry Supple would try to like, they didn't have any money in the budget to do a plan of development. She was trying to assign different tasks to people on the board. Look, you, you talk about economic development, you talk about conservation. And she was trying to get this thing put together and it just never, never got, got off the ground. And one thing that sparked, you know, like Bruce said, you know, sometimes rumors fly, but the rumor of a supermarket coming to town started in about 2005. And Portland's immediate reaction was that it would be a negative to the town, would change the character of the town. A, a big box store or a larger store. And the regulation passed, limited it to 40,000 square feet allowed in the town of Portland. And that regulation, the board at the time said, you know, should we just put this in our plan of development and, and wait until we do that? No, no, we should, with the staff's advice, we should put this through and then we'll put together a whole plan. And that did spark, which was very, you know, a positive thing. It sparked the creation of the plan of development, which we should have had before then. Which forces you to sit down and say, what do we really want in this town? So. The next year, we got the plan of development together and a lot of people spoke then. The first, the first regulation went through fairly fast. The next year, people had more time to get up and speak about if they wanted larger stores. And it was reinforced that everybody thought 40,000 square foot was a, a, a good limit. But. The Elmcrest property, or I shouldn't say Elmcrest property. There was a, there was an overlay zone created that said, if you give us X, Y, and Z, you can have up to 60,000 square feet. Lo and behold, I mean, really Elm, the Elmcrest property, when you look at the town, is the only piece of property that has all the pieces of the puzzle to put that together. So, you know, it was kind of on everybody's brain, but that's the way we got this overlay zone, which the Elmcrest property received an approval under. So, you know, they can put residential units on this property with the perm, with the approvals that they have. That's not to say that in, in a residential zone, you can't. You know, if I want to put up commercial storage units on Penfield Hill, I can't do that, right? And if you're, if you live out there, you're counting that that's not going to happen. So this one zone is, is for this one single piece of property. And, and, you know, the creation of this residential and other smaller retail units and the 60,000, up to 60,000 square foot was in keeping with the character of the town. Maybe the 60 was too big, but we're getting some other things that kind of fit in with our downtown area. So that was considered almost like the necessary evil to make the rest of the development happen. So I, I think the same people that opposed anything over 40,000 square feet, it's not in the character of the town, should probably oppose 200 or 300 residential units on one piece of property because that's also not really in the character of the town. And if it's the direction we want to head in, I don't think there's another spot where we can put 200 or 300 residential units. So it is really going to be a standout. Yes, it could be the focal point, but it is not going to be in character with all the development around it and the entire town.
If I may, Susan? Ben Serb, Board of Selectmen. I, like Mike, have followed this process from the beginning. I was at a lot of those same zoning meetings. And I'm fully aware that this zone, this special mud overlay zone was created just for this parcel. Which I had difficulty with from the beginning. I got on board to some extent knowing the original proposal was approximately 82 apartments and approximately 150,000 retail with no discussion of any tax incentive back then. So it would have probably been a benefit to the town in that this zone was created. Having said that, we're now talking about altering this text. this zone was created. Having said that, we're now talking about altering this text, which essentially only, as of now, works on this property. So it is a big deal, and it needs to be talked about now, and I'll give you an example why. If we alter this in any way but down, we could alter it down. I believe the ratio right now is one to three for 5,000. I would like to see the Zoning Commission lower it to one in the interim until a study is done, one per 5,000. And I think it's because once we do learn the numbers and what the effect is going to be on the town, I think we're going to see it does not benefit the town. What I'd like to see, and I'll kind of add on to what Brian said, this really needs to come down to the numbers, and a couple of the board members were worried about, I think well said, whose job is it, who's, essentially, I don't know if you said who's going to pay for it, but I can assure you, you would have my vote if we are the body to vote to have the study done prior to any change. Because the important thing to remember here is, if you change this regulation up, and I would recommend you change it down if you're going to change it, if you change this regulation up and it is not good for the town of Portland, we all need to be very clear, there's no fix. Once the regulation's changed and somebody applies, they are well within their rights to do so. We need to be careful. This is a very, very important point in the process. And I think we have to do the study at the very least and then go from there. Couple other things, one of the things that was said tonight is this, this was recommended by the Cecil Group after listening to the residents. And I'm going to have to disagree with that statement. I'm one, I'm one of the people, I'm sure there's many, that have sat here and read this VCI report done by the Cecil Group out of Massachusetts. And in it, on page 16, it asks the residents of Portland, what would you not want to see in this area of Portland? I think that's a pretty clear question, so I think everybody can understand that. What do you not want to see here? And if you go down in the list, it says the phrase, dense housing or low-income housing. This is in their study. So I obviously then wanted to know the exact definition of dense, because I think that's an important word, because it's in this report. The exact definition of dense is having component parts closely compact together. From the images that I saw online that are being displayed for, projected what could happen here, it's showing apartments, it's showing 238 units on this property. If that doesn't meet the definition of dense, I don't know what does. So having said that, and now that we're all fully aware on page 16 of this report, and it's very clear on what it says, you could easily conclude, if nothing at all, this report completely contradicts itself. If you read it cover to cover, you will see the ultimate benefit was for financial reasons only. In other words, if you want to develop this site, you have to sell your soul and put more residential in a commercial zone. I can tell you, it's very easy to get residential financing versus commercial, and all you're doing is diluting a beautiful commercial property. Having said that, you could easily start applying this all over the town, and I don't think people would appreciate it. So we need to take a step back and want to know what the ramifications will be, the long-term ran, financial ramifications. I think we all deserve to know that. I don't think we should settle for anything less than that. And we cannot, or should not, do any changes to this text, because there's no fix. If it's wrong, it's over. There's no, you can't take it back once we change it. We need to know all the information. I'll let everybody else speak for a little bit, and then I'll come back.
With all due respect, Mr. Serb, I, I think the VCI report will stand the test of any inspection or any scrutiny. I appreciate your concern about the density question. I have the same concern. And I also have the same concern about making any change without very, very careful consideration of what the impact is.
Thank you.
I, I received a statement at our meeting last night for the Economic Development Commission, and this came to me from, no surprise, it came from the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee. I'm not going to read it all, but I'll read the salient closing two paragraphs. But first, beginning with something that I think is significant. That group, as you know, has been, you know, very active for the past two years, and has participated in every, every forum, every venue, every engagement that has been related to this, this issue, including consistent attendance at the town-sponsored steering committee. It's important that people realize that the Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee, its objective is to prove that the reuse of the historic structures and landscapes on the Elmcrest campus is essential to Portland's economic future. This is not a preservation group. It's, it's an economic development group that has real strong beliefs and evidence that utilizing the historic properties properly would provide the best economic outcome, both for the owners as well as for the townspeople. I'm going to read the last two paragraphs of their position paper. Elmcrest Campus Advisory Committee is called ECAC, urges the Board of Selectmen, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Economic Development Commission to carefully weigh any proposed changes to the zoning text amendment against the specific guidelines of the recent Vibrant Community Initiative final report, the VCI report. That report presented three economically viable scenarios for the site's development. All of those included the adaptive reuse of the site's historic structures and landscape, which is in concert with our mission. The VCI report was the result of unprecedented citizen involvement and much input from the owner and developers of the site. It was unanimously endorsed by the Board of Selectmen last August. It is clear that the latest developers, the latest developer plan for the Elmcrest campus, which can be viewed on the ECAC website, deviates from the essential recommendations of the VCI report that was endorsed by the town. The ECAC asks that the town leadership and planners predicate any zoning amendments for this site on a mixed use of, on a mix of uses and density ratios that will also allow for the reuse of the historic and natural resources consistent with the town center and Portland's economic future. I'm going to submit this for the record. I might add that the commission discussed that position paper and is in agreement.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I want to make sure we leave some time for in public. So we've taken up the first hour up here, and what I'd like to do, is that a little better? You know, if I sit down, I sound this loud. What I'd like to do is take public comment. Now that this is not the last time we're going to talk about this topic, so certainly if you don't get to you, or you get so tired you have to go home, we'll have another meeting. Typically, what we do is we go on one side of the room, and we'll work to the back, the back, and we'll work to the front. Does that sound okay? We'll start on this side of the room, and I see your hand for a second. If you have good projection, you don't have to use the microphone, but you certainly can. Name, spell it.
My name is Tom Middlemass, and I live at Five Buddy Lane.
Wow.
Over in that way.
Did you get the Jones and Tennyson?
Little Mass, like the little of Massachusetts. Five Buddy Lane. And first off, three, keep the three minutes left, or come, come and come and the builders on the Bass Pro Shop in Bridgeport, I pass it three times a week, and it's a beautiful complex, and marina, and all of that. And the parking lot is huge, and it can hold about, looks like about 250, maybe 300 cars. It is really big. And I was thinking, with a 240-unit complex, add one and a half car, 1.5 cars per unit, you're talking about 352 cars, which is quite a lot of cars. But a question I have, you had a nice presentation where you showed other complexes being built, and you had one there that was 250 units on 65 acres.
Yeah.
I've never heard how many acres, how much land we have.
Yeah.
14.8 acres.
How many?
14.8.
14.8, if you wanted to put 240 units on 14.8. Okay, I saw this brochure here for these attractive, built by BRT. This afternoon, I was standing and looking at units like this, right in Rocky Hill, on west, the corner of West Street and Shumpike. And those are going by, and these are four-story units, look very similar to this. And I was talking to one individual a little while back, and it was going to be a large shopping center and residential, while the resident, or the shopping business, a little back, a little back, and there's more, seemed to be more residential. It looks like it probably started to be about 300 a unit. Anyone that wants to see what that looks like? It looks just like the units here in the picture can, can go by them.
Good point. Thank you. Anyone in the next row? Karen?
I'm going to use my, okay. I'm Karen Mazza, M-A-Z-Z-A, 13 Perry Avenue. My house board is the site, so I have a particular interest in what will, what will go there. But I won't speak to the details of a plan or anything, because we don't have that yet. I do want to speak in particular to the text amendment. I kind of feel I agree with many sentiments, with Mr. Flood's sentiments, Mr. Serb's sentiments. You're talking about making a text amendment when we don't have a solid plan yet, and to me, it kind of feels like we are building an airplane while it's flying. To change a text amendment when you don't know exactly what change that would bring from a particular developer opens, does open you up to, if this particular developer does not decide to build, the next one can come along and take advantage of that change in text amendments. It's worrisome. I did a little bit, I teach math, so bear with me, I have a lot of numbers, but I looked up a lot of statistics online, so my numbers might be a little off, but it was all based on census data from 2015, or 2014. And currently in town, we only have a total roughly, and somebody can correct me if you have the right number, but it's probably in the ballpark of 615 rented units in Portland. And I, we can correct my numbers later, but that's what I found, which was based on census data on a census website. So we're talking adding 238 units. That's a third increase. It's a 39% increase in rental units in town. And if we're talking about continuing the feel of Portland, I'm not necessarily sure that that's what we would want to look at. It's a dramatic increase. If you look at, and I'm going off the River East, 74,825 square feet of retail under the current regulations allows for 45 rental units. So the developer's asking to increase that current 45 under the current statutes up to 238. And the reason I'm saying is this is because I know this, but I'm not, and you probably know this, but everybody behind me might not. It's a huge increase. What does that do to our sewer and water system downtown? What does that do to our schools? Because I will assume that someone in these 238 units will be moving in with children. I think until you look at all those things and all the effects that 238 new living units will do to our town in all of those areas, that you shouldn't make a hard and fast text amendment change that allows for that, until you know exactly what that will do, and come up with a reasonable number that the town can handle. And that's, oh, one last thing. Before anybody decides to drink the Kool-Aid about the Brookfield Apartments that the developer has built, they rent for 1,060 to 2,550 a month. I would like to point out for everybody, so we're all as informed as we can be, that the median income in Brookfield in 2013 was $104,000. The median income in Portland at that same time was $70,000. Not anymore. That's old data, but I'm just pointing out the difference. It's from 2013. But I would imagine that, that those rental units and that rent is pulled from a higher median income than we currently have in Portland, is the point that I'm trying to make. So I just want us all armed with as much information as we can possibly be. That's all. Thank you.